Going to the Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, City Council Meeting. The first order of business would be roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Forsma.
Here.
Caravallo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Eylee.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mieske.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And Riley is absent and excused.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be communications. Are there communications from any of the council members? Here are none. I have one communication. Just a reminder, our open house at the new City Hall and Public Works Garage will be this Thursday, June 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we welcome all to attend. That takes us to presentations. We have two presentations scheduled for tonight. The first one would be from the Fair Board, and I'd like to introduce Rob and Samantha White. They're here to give us an update on this year's fair. Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having us. Whoops, I'm sorry.[83.43][83.43](Laughter). As the mayor said, my name is Rob White, and this is my daughter Samantha. I've been on the Stoughton Fair Board now for 21 years. This will be my 21st fair, so I've been around quite a while, and I know a lot of you, and I know we've worked together, and we just wanted to keep everybody in the loop with what's going on at the fair.
So, my name is Samantha White. I am 21 years old, which means I've been around as long as my dad's been on the Fair Board. I'm currently a senior at the University of Wisconsin-Plattville and the Stoughton Fair Meat Animal Sale Superintendent, as well as the Sheep Department Superintendent.
All right. Difference between a fair and a festival. A lot of people will call the Stoughton Fair a festival, but a festival is more of a celebration. Typically, people think of them as Setnemai. Setnemai would be, obviously, a festival. Church festivals, things like that. A fair is more of a gathering to display products for trade, or, in our case, agricultural exposition. Typically, annual event, and usually always in the same location.
So, a little bit of early fair history. The original Stoughton Fair Association was founded in 1879, but the first fair didn't last that long. The first fair was held during the summer of 1880, and they ran out of money, and it didn't really last. Originally, the fair was held down at East Side Park. So, the present-day fair, as we know it, began in 1925, and this year is our 94th year, which we're really excited about, and you can see the old grandstand in that photo there.
There was a period of time in the '30s and '40s that the Stoughton Fair was also the Dane County Fair. Before they built the fairgrounds up at the Align Energy Center, Stoughton was the Dane County Fair. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We receive no public funding. Our event is free to enter. We do not have a beer tent, and there's no alcohol served. And a lot of people say, "Well, how do you do that?" We do it with all volunteers. We only have several paid employees, and they all are usually under 18. They're the kids that we hire for our grounds crew and work in our kitchen. So, other than that, everything is pretty much done all volunteer. Now, we do have one lady we pay as our secretary. She's down at the Fair Office right now, putting in entries for this year's fair, so...
So, the fair has over 700 exhibitors from a variety of counties. Exhibitors will drive as far as an hour to get to the Stoughton Fair, some of them even bringing animals down. There are over 25 different departments that you can exhibit in at the fair, and these range from livestock, all the way to model rockets and photography. There's really something for everyone to do at the fair. You don't have to live outside of town. You can join 4-H and FFA, living in town, and still be able to exhibit the fair and get all the positive things being a fair exhibitor has to offer.
Being the fact that we are kind of an independent fair, that's what allows us to bring people from all over. If you're a county fair, you can only, you have to live in that county. As you can see, we do draw a lot of people to the community, and the fact that it's free to attend, really a good draw for the outside areas.
So, we're going to get into a little bit about the meat animal sale, which is one of my favorite parts of the Stoughton Fair. So, basically, what the sale is, is a sale of beef cattle, sheep, swine, boar goats, turkeys, chickens, and rabbits. It's a live auction. We'll go in a little bit about that process in a minute. This year's our sixth annual sale, so it's still fairly new, and we really try to focus on the farm-to-table aspect of agriculture, as that's really important in today's agriculture industry.
We did hand out some literature on the meat animal sale, as well as a brochure which contains about events that we have going on all the time, so...
So, why should you buy from the meat animal sale? Couple points we're going to talk about is, number one, you're supporting local youth and their livestock projects and their agricultural endeavors. That's the most important to me. That's what I want you to take home from this presentation. Secondly, you're getting fresh, locally sourced meat products. It doesn't get any fresher or more local than a kid from the community raising a pig, bringing it to the fair, and selling it for someone to enjoy. Lastly, we'll talk about the community outreach that the sale can bring to you. So, supporting local youth. I know when I was an exhibitor at the sale, the money that I got from it, it went into paying my feed bills. It went into paying vet bills. It went into purchasing equipment, future livestock, and, most importantly, it went into saving for college. I know that there was a Facebook post that maybe you saw, and it talked about Small Business Saturday, and it said, "You know, when you shop from a small business, you're buying a kid a soccer jersey, you're sending a girl to ballet lessons." When you're buying from the meat animal sale, you're giving a kid a future. You're helping them, not only with their future projects, but you might even be leading them into your future career.
Plus, you get to eat good meat. The animals are all born and raised right locally. Exhibitors participate in a Youth for the Quality Care of Animals certification at the county level. What that is, is it teaches the kids how to properly care for animals, you know, not only to make them grow, but just the proper way to raise them, so that they're not abused or anything like that. So, they, even though you think, "Well, I'm not going to buy an animal a kid raised," they're raised better than a commercial animal, so...
So, some community outreach with the sale. I like to focus a lot on that it's an excellent opportunity for neighbors, friends, and family to come out and see what their niece, or their nephew, or their family friend has been doing all summer. Chances are, if they're busy with a livestock project, you're not seeing them a lot this summer. Not only that, it's an excellent opportunity for businesses to come out, kind of show their support for the kids in the community, and bid on some animals and get a good quality product. So, how it works, the large animal portion of the sale is the sale of beef, sheep, and swine. They're auctioned off at a per-pound basis, with bids usually starting around $1 per pound. Like I mentioned earlier, it is a live auction. We have an auctioneer going, and the kids will bring the animals up through the sale ring and auction them off at $1 per pound. The small animals that we sell are poultry rabbits and boar goats, and they're auctioned off at a per-head basis. So, you wouldn't buy it at a per-pound basis like a steer. You'd start at around $20 a pound and go up from there and...
A head.
A head, my bad. And go on from there. The animals at our sale are either processed in Rio or Delevance. That's also keeping it in the southern Wisconsin area. And the nice thing about it is we have the meat markets there on sale day, so you can work with them, fill out a cutting sheet, ask any questions you might have, and decide what cuts you'd like to bring home. So, another point that is near and dear to my heart is the Went Agricultural Education Center. It's an interactive educational exhibit. It is the white building nearest the man's center that has a tent at the end of it and the chainsaw guy on the other end of it. And it has exhibits on Wisconsin agriculture, natural resources, livestock, anything you can imagine that is in the agriculture industry, we try to talk about it. Something that I think is really important that we talk about is continuing education in agriculture in the state of Wisconsin, as we have several state schools and technical colleges where you can continue your education in the agriculture field. We do live demos throughout the week. We'll do some on farm safety, natural resources, different things like that. We typically have a milking cow. She's not real, but her name is Alice, and she does talk, and you can go up and she milks water out of her udder. So, that's pretty cool, and as well as live animals in the petting zoo outside.
All right. Something we've been doing for a few years is what we've called Safety Night. And we were kind of struggling to get traction with that until we contacted the police department and the fire department. This year, all of these, I'll call them agencies or departments, are going to be at Safety Night. They're going to be handing out things for the kids. Do you want to mention anything about...
No, it's pretty inclusive. I mean, we've taken the opportunity to expand the Safety Night a little bit, and through the cooperation of all the departments in the city, and then the other agencies you see up there, so it should be a really interesting time.
Yep. In the past, we've tried to get MedFlight in. That creates some headaches. Last year, as MedFlight was coming in, people forgot to cover up the brochures on the table, and MedFlight makes a little bit of a breeze, so we were chasing paper. As far as grandstand events go, in the yellow brochure that we handed out, it's a full schedule of the entire time. On Thursday, the 4th of July, we have a truck and tractor pull that's held in front of the grandstand, and it's also a really good place to watch the fireworks that the city is doing that night, so... And then on Friday, if you don't like metal horsepower, we have the real thing with the horse pull on Friday night. And then Saturday, we have a rodeo that includes bull riding and barrel racing. And then on Sunday, we have a strongman competition put on by Jim Brooks from here in town. He does, I think, the one at Setnemai as well, and this one's going to be more agricultural-based, so the events will be, I don't know, carry a round bale of straw or something. I don't know, whatever strong guys really do.
So, some other events that we have during fair week, as you can see on the screen, there's a lot of them. Some of them I want to highlight are the 4-H Olympics, where kids in 4-H and FFA go, and they compete against each other in fun games like egg toss or water balloon toss, things like that. I mean, it really builds camaraderie between kids in the 4-H club. The nice thing about fairs is you do meet people from across the state, and during the fair, it might be the only time you see some of your friends you've met through showing. Another really cool thing we do is the Master Showmanship Competition. This is something we started at the Stoughton Fair over 15 years ago, and a lot of county fairs in the area then followed suit afterward. What Master Showmanship is, is you take the champion and reserve champion, senior showman, so the oldest showman in the barn, for each of the large animal species, dairy, beef, goats, sheep, and swine, and you have them compete against each other, showing all the species, to see who's kind of the best of the best in all the barns, and see who the true champion showman of the fair is. So, those are just some of the other events that we do throughout the fair. You can find the rest of them in your pamphlet.
All day long, we have a big tent in front of, or in our food court. We call it Moyers Music Pavilion. Moyers is a sponsor of that. We, of course, have the Went Agricultural Education Center. This year, the carnival and wristband specials. We've heard that people say, "Oh, you can't afford to go to the fair." Well, if you pre-purchase your wristbands for the rides, they have a deal right now, it's $20 for the whole day, or $60 for the entire fair. So, if somebody goes down and they want to go every day and ride the rides, they are bringing us new rides, too. We have a chainsaw woodcarver that we then auction off the carvings at the end, and, of course, you can walk through the barns, which is what I encourage, and check out all the kids with their animals, and, of course, we've got good food. Want to talk about food?
Sure. So, like we mentioned, the food is really good. One thing that is unique about the Stoughton Fair is the Fair Association sponsors a couple dinners throughout the week. Fair Board members are cooking them, serving them, interacting with fairgoers. Thursday night is our rib dinner. Friday night is the classic Wisconsin fish fry, and Saturday night's steak dinner. We also like to have different local vendors in the food court. Stoughton FFA alumni is a huge vendor, the Farm Kitchen...
Whoops.
That's okay. Dane County pork producers all like to come to our fair, support the community.
So, one thing people always say is, "Oh, I'd love to get involved, but I don't know how." Well, you can get on the Fair Board. We're always looking for volunteers. Hey is not real good, but it can be rewarding. If you have an interest in something, even if you don't live on a farm, say you're interested in knitting. Well, we have knitting there. You can come down and be a superintendent. Basically, they're the ones who run each individual show. We do hire kitchen staff and grounds crew, so if you want to supplement your income a little, come on down. Otherwise, typically, we, kids, we'll hire starting at 14-years-old, so we'll put them to work. And other than that, just come down and enjoy the fair.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for these two while they're here, or...
Just thank you for all that you do for the community. It's great.
You're very welcome. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Switching seats for this, so I can...
Oh, okay. All right. Next presentation is going to be on open meetings and ethics and parliamentary procedure and public records presentation, and that'll be done by Attorney Dragney. I don't think he's going to be quite as exciting about talking about the fair, but he'll give it his best shot.
Definitely not as exciting as talking about the fair, but we'll give it our, as you say, we'll give it our best shot. And I'm not sure I'm going to cover everything here tonight. I'll kind of take my direction from you all, how much you want to cover and how much you don't want to cover. We'll cover the most important things, I think, starting with the open meetings law. I'll mention you all should have in your packet an outline I prepared for this presentation that covers the main points that I'm going to be covering tonight, so feel free to follow along or review it later. And we do have, I know some folks who haven't seen this presentation before, so this may be new for some people. So, in Wisconsin, we do have a law called the Open Meetings Law that requires that all meetings of all local governmental bodies be preceded by public notice, publicly held in places reasonably accessible to the public and open to all citizens at all times unless otherwise expressly allowed by law. This law applies to governmental bodies. Governmental broadly, body is broadly defined, for our purposes, to include the City Council, all plan commission, all standing committees, all boards and commissions within city government. The thing that is difficult under the open meeting law is determining whether we have a meeting that is subject to the law. So, the question of what constitutes a meeting. There is a presumption in the law that says that if one half or more of the members of a governmental body are present, the meeting is rebuttably presumed to be for governmental purposes. So, that's a good starting point. If you know that there are, if half or more members of the committee or the council are going to be present, the law will assume that that meeting is for governmental purposes and is subject to the law, and if that is not the case, you'll have to think carefully about how to avoid, or how to avoid a problem. There is a two-part test that courts have developed for determining whether there is a meeting. Part one of the test is whether the purpose of the meeting is discussing, or deciding, or information gathering regarding governmental business. And that can be broader than maybe people sometimes recognize. So, let's say, for example, there was a, the council decided to go together to look at something in the city for information gathering purposes. That would be a meeting. You'd have to give notice of that and make sure that was structured in such a way that it complies with the open meetings law. So, it's not just when we're here together discussing something or voting on something, it's where we're anywhere, discussing governmental business or doing governmental business. So, that's the first part test is the purpose test. The second part of the test is the number test, and this can get a little tricky. If the number of members who are participating in that gathering is sufficient to determine the body's course of action, then you pass, then you meet the numbers test. And that can be the affirmative power to pass something, so, you know, a majority of the members have enough power to approve a measure. Or it could be a negative quorum, if you have enough people to prevent a measure from passing. That would also be something that would pass the numbers test. Now, this numbers test can get a little difficult when you start thinking about quorum issues. You know, we don't need to have the entire, all 12, 12, right? We don't need to have all 12 members present to have a quorum, and Stoughton, a quorum, I think, is eight. So, theoretically, four members, four members of the council could constitute a negative quorum. Could be enough people to prevent passage of a measure at a meeting where you have eight alders present. So, the numbers test can be a little tricky, and it gets particularly problematic with smaller bodies, where smaller numbers can come into play. So, what I say about, I recently had a, or not that long ago, I had a discussion with another community about this, where they have some committees with three people, and the problem was, well, then two people can't even talk together. And I said, "Look, we have to be, we have to think about the purpose test here, too. There's a question of intent." And so, think about, you know, are we, are we doing something that is intended to get around the open meeting law, or are we not? If you're not, and you're on a two, three-person committee, and two of you are talking about something, if your intent is not to violate the law, you're talking about something other than, you know, how you're going to do something as a committee. If you're not doing governmental business together, then you're okay. So, bear that in mind. Let me stop. Any questions yet? Okay. There are a few other things about the open meeting law that can be a little bit interesting. One is something called a walking quorum. That occurs when you have a series of meetings which, when put together, lead to enough people to pass the numbers test. So, if someone on a governmental body decided, "Well, I'm going to call, you know, five or six other people, and we're going to talk about this and get ready for the meeting ahead of time," that, if you pass the numbers test, that's a meeting, even though you're not all talking at the same time. If there are a series of discussions, that could constitute a meeting through a walking quorum. I have a couple of different things I put in here that are special things to pay attention to. I have one called the watering hole meeting. So, the most common example is, "Let's all get together for beers after the, after the meeting," and, you know, that's okay, as long as you're not doing business. And remember, if there's more than half of the members there having beers, the law presumes you're doing business. So, be careful about, you know, how you, about those kinds of social gatherings that can be, sometimes get you in trouble. The community organization meeting is one that I put in here, because it's not unusual for elected officials to go to events that are sponsored by other organizations in the city. Chamber of Commerce, School Board, Arts Council, Sustainable Stoughton, you know, these are organizations that hold events. Council members like to go to these at times. So, again, you have to pay attention to both the numbers test and the intent or the purpose test. If you know the group is going to be talking about a matter that is, you know, governmental business, something that is or may well be before the city, and you know that the numbers test may be satisfied, I think it's a good practice to just have the clerk notice it. And there's a notice called a bad key notice that we can use that basically gives the public notice, there may be a quorum of the X, Y, Z committee, or commission, or council at this event, and then we comply with the open meetings law. Written correspondence and emails need to be considered here as well. Email is the more challenging in our day. The Attorney General's Office has indicated its opinion that emails, email correspondence may constitute a meeting. The factors that are likely to be considered include how many people are included on the email discussion, the number of communications, the timeframe over which these communications are taking place, and the extent to which the email exchanges appear to be of the nature of some kind of a conversation about business. And so, the best advice is to, you know, avoid using email in that way. Avoid having correspondence with a group of people about a matter, about city, city business, because those emails can constitute a meeting.
We suggest you do not reply all.
That's a good idea. Reply all is not a good idea. Social gatherings that are, you know, chance gatherings, and are not intended to avoid the law, they're not subject to the open meetings law. Closed session, I'll talk a little bit about closed session. We need to have a legal basis to meet in closed session. Closed session means the door is closed, the only people who are allowed in the room are the members of the governmental body, and those who are assisting the members of the governmental body. And we can only do that when we have a statutory basis to do that. If we are anticipating ahead of time that we are going to have a closed session, then we need to give advance notice of that, and we normally do. I mean, we almost always know when there's a likelihood that we'll go into a closed session. Some people don't realize that you can actually go into closed session when you didn't anticipate that. If you are in a meeting discussing something that was properly noticed, and you recognize that you, you have a need to go into closed session, and there's a legal basis to do that, you can go into closed sessions spontaneously, but there are limits on then how and whether you can reconvene in open session. If we ever get into that situation, we'll, we'll deal with it at the time. Voting in closed session is something that can get a little bit challenging to figure out when you can and when you can't. The advice from the Attorney General's Office that I give is that votes should be taken in open session unless the voting process is an integral part of what is authorized to be done in closed session. And so, when I'm analyzing that, I'm asking, would, would the voting process in open session undermine our closed session discussion? So, let's say we're trying to determine how to respond to something in a contract and negotiation situation, and we need to have the ability to vote in closed session to avoid showing our cards to the party that we're negotiating with, then there are times when that, that's okay. There's an article that I've attached to the outline, published by the League, that provides a lot more detail about this if you're interested. I've also attached a Justice Department compliance guide. Any questions about the open meetings law before we move on to ethics?
Go ahead, Noel, for some bosom.
Matt, if we find ourselves in a situation where a number of us have gone to a meeting like Sustainable Stoughton you've mentioned in there, and there are too many people, would you suggest that one of us or more of us just leave, you know, like excuse ourselves and leave, or...
Well, I think I would, I would ask, like, why, what's going on? I mean, if it, if, what is being, if you're there for something that really isn't about city business, and you're not there gathering information about or discussing something that is before the city, and you're discussing something else that's of interest to you all, then you don't, then the purpose test is not satisfied, and you're okay.
So, it has to be both numbers and purpose?
Yeah, it has to be both the numbers and the purpose. So, but if you find yourself at a situation where, "Oh, we have the numbers, and we're getting, and we're discussing city business now," then you have to think about how to, how to resolve that, okay? Which may mean you have to, you have to excuse yourself. Any other questions? Okay. Ethics. So, ethics law in, in the city of Stoughton comes from two places. We do have, in our Code of Ordinances, a section that addresses ethics, and we also have state statutes that address ethics. I'm going to cover some of the highlights here in terms of things that are not allowed. I'm going to cover some of the highlights here in terms of things that are not allowed. One, public officials are prohibited from using their offices to obtain anything of substantial value for their own private benefit, or for the benefit of their immediate family, or organizations with which they are associated. Organizations with which they are associated typically is language that means business organizations with which you are associated as an officer, or director, or owner. There's a special definition that we have to look at when we're trying to decide whether someone is legally associated with an organization such that there, there could be a conflict of interest. There is, there's something that, that I'll cover here where, where this, that can be a little complicated, and that is, if the, if the matter that's coming before the council is something that you may gain from, or may affect you personally, but it affects not only you, but a broad class of, a broader class of people that you are kind of in the same boat with, then that does not present a violation. So, for example, let's say there is a development proposal that affects a neighborhood you live in, and you and others in the neighborhood are similarly affected by that proposal. The fact that you are potentially affected by that does not preclude you from voting on that unless the way that you are affected is unique to you, and different from the people you represent. You are here, after all, to represent people, and so if there's something that affects a broader class of people and you, you don't have a conflict that would prevent you from, from voting. Offering or receiving anything of value, you're not allowed to offer or request something of value that could reasonably be expected to influence your vote, or that could be seen as a reward for your action. If you do have a conflict because something would potentially benefit you, then the advice that I give, and it's consistent with Governmental Accountability Board, is that you should leave that portion of the meeting that involves that issue. And the minutes should reflect your absence. Typically, that means, best case scenario, if you really do truly have a conflict, you, you get up from the table, and you go sit out in the audience section, and, and you're not even participating in deliberation. Want to draw high, attention to private interests in public contracts. It's actually unlawful for a elected official, a local elected official, to participate in the making of a contract in his or her official capacity if that official has a direct or indirect financial interest in the contract. And it's unlawful in your private capacity to negotiate, or bid for, or enter into a contract if you have an interest in, in that transaction, and you, and you're an elected official. There's, there's no way, you can't simply abstain on this one. If you're, if you, or, if, if you are entering into a contract with the city, abstaining will not avoid a violation. Now, there are exceptions for contracts involving receipts and dispersments of $15,000 or less per year, and there are a few other exceptions that I won't get into, but be careful about contracts. That includes, by the way, selling land or property to the city. I've had that situation come up, where an elected official owned land, they wanted to sell it to a municipal government, they were on the board, they couldn't do it without violating the statute. And that one's actually a criminal statute. It's a Class E felony, so you want to avoid that. Brief advisory opinions. In Stoughton, our process is that officials who are wondering whether they have a conflict or don't have a conflict, and want an opinion that they can rely on, are allowed under our ordinance to ask the city Ethics Board for an advisory opinion. If you do that, you need to make your request in writing, provide all relevant facts. If you do that, and you get an opinion, following that opinion is evidence of intent to comply with the law. The Ethics Board, furthermore, may not make that opinion public unless the person who's asked for it has consented, or if it's redacted in a form that protects the requestor's identity, or if the requestor makes or purports to make public all or part of the advisory opinion, then it can be released. There is a detailed, there's an article attached to the outline that provides a detailed discussion on ethics and conflict of interest rules, if you'd like to read further on that. I would also say that in addition to the opportunity to go to the Ethics Board, it's not unusual for local officials to request that I give them informal advice. It's not a formal advisory opinion, but as a city attorney, I can give informal advice to you on matters. Or of course, you can seek your own legal counsel if you like. So I've been talking a long time, and I, I think you probably have heard enough from me, unless anyone really wants to hear about parliamentary procedure or the public records law, I think maybe we'll call it a night.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. And then this will take us to our public comment period, and we have one gentleman signed up. I believe the name is Dale Kittleson. And we ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and we'd like you to keep your comments to three minutes or under, if you could.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Dale Kittleson. Address, my home address is on the west side of Madison, 702 O'Danley Lane. And the address we're looking at, I just wanted to come up here this evening. We, looking at, we're looking at opening a entertainment environment here in Stoughton. We wanted to meet everybody face to face and say hi. Been in the business for quite a while, and we have got some great people on staff. So we want to create something here that everybody feels comfortable in coming to at this saloon that we're looking at applying for license for, and hopefully we are able to do future business with you guys. The saloon will be at 111 Chalet Drive. We're going to take that over. We want to revamp it, make it a little more classier, kind of up, you know, a little more upscale type of business there. And we've got a general manager that we're looking at, who's been in the business for thirty-some years in Madison, and she is phenomenal, so she's going to, we have a lot of people behind us to make sure that this goes properly, and hopefully make, you know, bring business into Stoughton, and make everyone very happy with it. So, thank you for this opportunity, and hopefully we can do some future business. So, any questions at all, or anything?
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And would anyone else wish to speak with the council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's three items in the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion for approval. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I think it was Bartlett. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. I'd like to skip to item number eight, if that's okay with everybody. And item number eight is R-85 of 2019, and that's coming from Public Safety. That would be Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety presents for your approval, Resolution 85, 2019, authorizing directing the proper city officials to issue a Class B fermented beverage license, and a reserved Class B intoxicating liquor license to Shaker Saloon LLC. Dale Kittleson, agent, doing business as Shaker Saloon, located at 111 Chalet Drive. And I would move for approval.
Second.
A second by Alder Person Hirsch. Alder Person Jensen, anything they'd add?
Yep. It's, it's, they're taking over, what do I, can't remember the name of the?
Brickhouse?
Yeah, Brickhouse, yeah. Brickhouse, and like you said, it can be remodeling. So, I don't know, no problems that we came up with, everything seemed fine to you.
Yeah, everything was in order.
Okay. Alder Person Boersma?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wondered, from Holly, if this falls into our number of approvals that we can make for the licenses throughout the city, and where we are with that, if you?
Um, yes, so this is a reserve license. So it is one of the $10,000 licenses. We have several available. We aren't close to our quota on reserve licenses. I don't know the number off the top of my head, I want to say.
We are close, or aren't?
We are not close to our, these are the reserve licenses. We are at our quota for the regular Class B licenses, but the reserve Class B licenses we have, I want to say around eight more that we could give out.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thanks, guys. Good luck. Okay, we'll go back to old business then. R-72 of 2019 comes from Community Affairs Council Policy, and I believe that's Alder Person Legaki.
Thank you. I'm just not finding it in my, it's down to near the bottom. Thank you. Community Affairs and Council Policy is bringing forward Resolution R-72-2019, approving the registration forms for chicken keeping and honeybee keeping. I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. And Alder Person Legaki, you want to kind of run us through this one?
Sure. This is, um, this policy was before the council before, and appropriately brought back to Community Affairs and Council Policy. And really, we haven't made hardly any substantial changes except that. We chose to change how we, how we want to do registration. We're asking for an initial $25 upfront, and if people are compliant in letting us know about their bees yearly during the time of January, or December 31st through March 31st, we're hoping that they'll come in and just register that, and there's no fees involved for the ongoing registration. If they are beyond March 31st, that $25 late fee will take effect. The goal is to be in compliance, so that we know where these hives and these chicken coops are. And so, that was our thought, to see how this goes, and, and that will hopefully help bring about a strong registration policy. But this would allow us to know where they are.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Alder Person Boersma?
I have three potential issues, and I think, and this comes from a constituent primarily, but the concern about the $25 registration for some people seems a bit steep, although there is a provision that it not happen every year. Second one is that it could potentially be duplicative, and then what I mean by that is that I think that the department, the State Department of Agriculture and Consumer Protection requires registration of being chicken, at least chicken keepers. And then the third one is that the, the, I believe the policy is that our staff can still go out and look at chicken coops and bee, bee places, and I would, I would like to know whether or not it's intended by city staff to schedule appointments for that, or if they can just show up. I think it, it would be important for them to schedule appointments for visiting chicken coops. So that's, that's my feeling on it, and I, I think it, I think it's something that we probably should clarify as to how these coops are going to be looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to, Holly, would you like to talk about the fee? So it's $25 for the initial registration?
Right. So the $25 fee for the initial registration is pretty consistent with all of our other fees that we currently have within the city. As far as the inspection, when someone comes to register their, their bees or their chickens, they, on the registration form, their signature authorizes that inspection, so I wouldn't see any issues with the actual inspection. I don't.
Attorney Dragan?
I'll just mention, I talked to Alder Person Jensen before the meeting, who I think also is contacted by a constituent who is, I think, just concerned about making sure they had notice before an inspection, so that it wasn't like an unannounced inspection. So it wouldn't be hard to add, like, upon prior notice to the, to the form, if you want to do that.
Okay. Just a quick question. The inspection, is that done by planning?
Yes.
Okay.
With all of our staff.
Mm-hmm. And how does that typically work?
A knock and check. We don't generally send out a notice. Generally knock on the door. Attempt to make an attempt there. We don't generally schedule an appointment ahead of time.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Rodney, if, if you knock and there's no one home, do you still go check?
We have.
So the, the reason to put the language on the form that authorizes the inspection is the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution. We can't go onto somebody's property and start looking around their backyard without their permission. So this is a way of getting permission. So I guess the question is, do you want to impose an additional, do you want to attach an additional step in the process and say to your planning department, now you, you want to build in a, a prior notice step in the process?
Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, if I could, make sure you're speaking into the microphone. Yeah. I, I think that this form is redundant, because we already have State Statute 95.51, which requires people with chickens in their backyards, or bees, or whatever, to register their livestock. It's a premise, premise registration? Yes, that's what it's called. So they're, they're required to do that. So as far as knowing where everything is, we already know that, because they are required to do that. So it's, it's redundant to that. I, I really don't see a need for this, and I would, I would say just don't bother with it. Just reject this, and then there's no issue. There's no issue about people inspecting, there's no issue about fees, there's, there's nothing that we need to worry about.
Okay. Just for clarification, the statute you mentioned?
Yep.
They're registering with who?
It's, it's regular, right on your own, on your own registration form, right here. This, this wild.
So, but that doesn't notify us, or does that notify somebody else?
It's, it's, it's a state, it's, it's a, I believe it is a private state, if I can remember right, I think it's a private state cooperation?
Yeah.
Where they, they, they register, and there's a, there's a database that's, that's there that's accessible. If anybody wants to know, we can, I believe, we can go in and investigate, and find out who's, who's registered or not. Matt, you, are you familiar with this at all?
I can't say I'm familiar with the registration process. I thought it was Department of Ag Trade and Consumer Protection.
I believe it is, but it's done with a, with cooperation, I'd have to pull it back up.
And my understanding is, is they don't give us notification, which is kind of what we, we want here. That way, if there is an enforcement issue, we have it on file, and we know whether or not they've registered, they, they, they're, you know, allowed under our ordinance to have them. So I think that's kind of the rationale for us registering them. And I know we have a couple alders that had their hands up, Alder Person Legaki, and then Hirsch.
Just a point of question for Alder Jensen. Are you saying that you want all of the policy, or just the part that pertains to the poultry that allows it to be registered? As far as I know, there's no registration for the hives of honeybees, and so I would at least ask you to consider that.
Well, I, I think that the, I'd have to look back at it. Let me, let me, give me some time here, and I want to look back at the reform.
And Alder Person Hirsch?
First off, the registration is just to let the, I'm looking at the DACAP registration right now. All it does is, you fill out the form, you check whether or not you have it. There's no record of compliance. I mean, what we put together here, along with our other ordinances, to make sure when people have livestock, they're treating them appropriately, they have the right coop size, they're abiding by our laws with respect to keeping them a distance from other neighbors. That is not part of the DACAP process. This is about keeping our community under, you know, This is about keeping our community under, you know, knowing what is out there, making sure that people are safe, making sure that animals are not being abused or in too small a coop. This is our responsibility, it's not the state's, it's ours, and this is what we're trying to do with these things. With respect to registration and looking at, I guess, Rodney, when you go look at a coop, do you actually go into a fenced-in yard without permission, or do you just peek in over a fence?
Generally, we're getting the application from somebody in hand, and we let them know that we're planning to come out right, the inspection, so we don't necessarily arrange a time, but there's a conversation with an applicant about their application before we go onto their property.
So it's not this kind of nefarious thing that you're like sneaking up and, you know, going on people's properties?
No.
I'm just saying, I know you're not, but I just, it seems like this is what is being implied, and so-
We're certainly not trying to.
I know you're sneaky, but, you know. So I think what we have here is a good compromise from what you guys all said before, and whether or not, you know, Attorney Dragney, if it doesn't meet the, what you were talking about with, you know, private property laws, but they are being contacted prior that they're going to come out at some point.
Well, it does, with this process and with this form, it gives us a way to get confirmation when they register, that they consent, they authorize us to do the inspection. So then we clearly have their permission to do that, and I guess the concern is that some people might feel that, oh, if I sign this, now I'm saying you can come on my property anytime you want, and you don't have to tell me, and so some people maybe are concerned about, you know, whether there should be any more kind of process governing the question of access to do an inspection. Should there be a notice requirement in the, as part of that? That was the question that I heard from a couple of people.
I guess to follow up, has there been any complaints?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. So far, with all the coop things and other, we have no complaints of how planning has handled inspecting chickens so far.
I haven't heard anything. Alder Person Jensen, did you find what you're looking for, or should I go on?
No, I didn't, well, I-
Okay. Alder Person Boersma?
Yeah, I have some real serious problems with if they're going to be inspecting coops after the initial inspection, for sure, that they get permission from the owner to get onto that property, because I think that that's a violation of Fourth Amendment.
They already said that they do it.
I think the intent of it is to do the initial inspection, and then unless there's a complaint base, we probably wouldn't do another inspection. And certainly, I feel the planning department, they're not looking for things to do, they have plenty to do. They're not going to go out of their way to inspect these coops or the hives unless there's been something brought to their attention. And I think that by signing the registration, they've already authorized permission, whether it's initially, or any point while they're operating, or having the chickens or the bees. So I don't really see a problem with it. If it became a problem, or if people feel they're getting inspected daily, or weekly, or monthly, and it was excessive, then I think that would be a real conversation. But I think what we're looking for here is really an answer to a problem that doesn't exist. That's just my personal two cents worth.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Sure. What do you have?
That any subsequent inspections be done with the permission of the owner.
Okay, is there a second?
Permission of the owner.
Did everybody understand the amendment?
Are you looking to, would that be like item three on there then, and it was an additional bullet point?
I just want to have it, so if the initial inspection, it authorizes, I think this authorizes them to do an initial look at, see at the, you know, with the registration. But any subsequent inspections, where people would just go onto somebody's property without permission of the owner on the second time around, I think we should have, we should have the property owner to allow that person to enter their property, because this could go on for years and years and years, and I just think that it's okay, maybe, with the initial registration, to have the person take a look from the city, but any subsequent ones, I believe that there should be permission for people to enter property.
I'll second it with the question from Matt.
All right, so we have a motion for an amendment by Boersma, and a second by Jensen.
Would that, Matt, would that cover, or would that satisfy any Fourth Amendment issues?
Well, what it would mean is that the form would be modified to say that the person who's registering is agreeing to or consenting to one inspection post-registration, but only one. So that first inspection would be approved by the property owner. Any subsequent inspection, we'd have to get their consent to do that again, or if they refuse to consent, we'd have to get a special inspection warrant. And so this would, if the amendment is approved, it means you'd have basically permission, the owner would say, I'm giving you, consenting to one inspection of my property.
I had Alder Person Legaki, did you have your hand up, and then Hirsch, and then Doom?
Thank you. Alder Person Boersma, do you, are you sure you want to add an amendment, or do you believe that the language offered by Attorney Dragney, and he didn't say exactly where, but I think he said, meant it on number two, you agree to allow planning department and police department staff to enter your property to inspect the chicken keeping operations with notice? Would that be-
Yeah, I-
Amenable to you?
I think that's amenable. I think that that would suffice for me to, just so people aren't having people come onto their property without permission. So initially, they're getting permission from the owner to enter the property, to look at the coop, or look at the bee hive, or whatever, but then the second one, second time, they need permission to enter the property, to be messing around, to be going out to enter the coop, or to look at it. I mean, there, you know, basically, I'm wanting to address the issue of, we don't want our city people to be trespassing on people's private property.
I agree, and I think that was the intention of this body, and so I would encourage you to perhaps think about that amendment, and simplify with that, with notice to number two. And if we need be, I wouldn't mind adding, perhaps like in meeting minutes from Community Affairs, when we revisit this, that perhaps, that reasonableness of what does notice mean? When there's a complaint, or a concern that a call comes in, perhaps that's a quick knock, and a more urgent, but if it's registration and it's the first time, I kind of like keeping it open with this reasonableness, and so I encourage you to consider that for your amendment.
Alder Person Hirsch?
I'm fine with what, yes.
I guess, according to what Director Shiel has already said, is that they don't go trespassing, they knock on the door, they get permission. You're asking them to get, do a lot more calling, setting up, staff time to do this, and I think we also talked at CACP, is that for any future, it would be every, what, three to five years? We thought it would be a rotating, every three to five years, I think that's what we had discussed, and that, so, you know, planning isn't, you know, stuck, you know, updating, looking at coops and hives all summer long, it's, they take maybe three to five a year, and that's it. And so it's rotated, so you're not even going to be checked every year, it's every three to five years. And so, I mean, maybe that's something, you know, in number two, you know, you agree to planning to enter your property for the first initial, and then, you know, subsequent inspections every three to five years. I mean, something simple like that.
All right, Attorney Dragney has something, and then it'll be Alder Person Doom after that.
I just want to make sure I understand, I think that there has been a motion made and seconded, I believe. So the motion that has been made is to amend the inspection language to indicate that one inspection would be approved with the registration form, and I think that's an annual form, so each year, there would be another approval of one inspection. Any inspection after that would require the property owner to consent, or would require us to get a warrant. That, I just want, that's my understanding of the motion that is on, that is currently before you.
I had Alder Person Doom, and then we can come back to him.
Question I would have, if you're going to have that, that they have to be contacted, what if you have a neighbor that's calling, and there's a problem with the bees, or whatever, and so somebody goes over there to inspect, they couldn't get ahold of that person for the inspection, that's going to open the door, too. I think that, because they weren't notified, that you're going to go inspect them.
Okay. Chief, did you have something?
Well, maybe Matt can explain the process to get a inspection warrant, and what that would entail, because I think you're talking about a really difficult process to get, to go through an inspection warrant, so maybe Matt can explain that to the council as well.
I would work with Rodney or Michael to prepare an affidavit explaining to a judge why we need to do an inspection. We would take that either to your municipal court judge, or a circuit court judge, ask the judge to issue a warrant.
So every year?
No, that would, well, with the motion that's pending, that would only be needed, it wouldn't be needed for the first inspection, because the first, the form would say, I'm agreeing to allow you to do one inspection after I submit my registration, but if there were a need for a follow-up inspection later, because, for example, there was a complaint, for example, if the owner, if we were unable to secure consent to do a subsequent inspection, then we would need a warrant.
So we're actually creating more possible work for us?
Yeah.
The whole reason to put the language in the form was to make it easy to do inspections.
Right.
Yeah, I think to Alder Person Doom's point is, if we do the initial inspection, and then there's a complaint, and then we try to get consent, and they don't answer our phone calls, and in the meantime, something terrible's happening in the chicken coop, or the bees, we have no recourse. By the time we get to a judge, you know, bad things could happen in that time. So I really think that the way that the ordinance is written really is the best way, because I just think that it allows us the flexibility to go in there and do our work, and get on to the other things we need to do the course of day. I respect the fact that people don't want people coming on their property, but unless there's an issue, there's no reason for us to go there anyway, and if there is an issue, then we need to have the ability to take care of the problem. And I think that the way it was written allows us to do that. Chief?
Yeah, just maybe a quick follow-up, because, you know, if there is a complaint, and it complains about abuse, it's quickly going to become, not a planning department problem, but a police department problem to deal with. And without having that ability to go in and verify that there's actually animal deglect or mistreatment, or whatever there may be, that could add a considerable length of time to how an investigation could be processed. With the language that's in the current permit, you kind of avoid those issues, you can find out if there is truly something going on there or not right away, and deal with it quickly.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the amendment? And maybe, Holly, can you read the amendment as you have it?
Okay, so the amendment was to amend the form to allow for the initial inspection, and to have consent to enter the property for any subsequent inspections.
So that's the question on the table. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the amendment fails, we go back to the original motion, which was the proposed ordinance as is. Are there any questions or comments? Alder Person Legaki, and then Jensen?
I believe I'd like to go forward and offer language for point number two of the chicken keeping. Under number two, I would like to add the terminology "with notice" to the end of that sentence, and in the good faith, commensurate, matching. First inspection is considered acceptable. If more calls come in, we would respond, but I do like the idea of trying to give some notice without having it become work. And so perhaps I didn't eloquently express my thought, but notice could be a lot of things. I think it covers us, and yet I also think it gives respect to property owners, and beekeepers and chicken keepers.
Can, before you finally make your motion, and there's a second, so I want to make a couple of points. One, so the idea behind notice is, you don't need permission, you just have to give notice. I think it would be helpful to be a little more clear about how much notice, so for example, so that the plan, so we know what, you know, I would say with, if, my suggestion would be to consider, for example, upon not less than, you know, 24 hours prior notice, so that, or 12 hours, or whatever you think is appropriate, which may be by, you know, mail, or notice in person, something like that, just so it's clear what's required.
If I were to offer that, would we also need to then speak to if there were an urgent situation or a complaint? I don't want to have this become voluminous.
Well, I mean, if you have an emergency situation, your law enforcement, and your firefighters, and your EMTs are not going to worry about notice. They're just going to get in there and deal with the emergency, and we'll clean up the mess later. Right?
But it could be a considerable mess once you-
It could be a mess later.
Especially if you have language in there that limits the ability to do that. And I think maybe the concept that's being lost here is this, you know, this is a privilege that's being granted by the city to allow the keeping of bees and chickens, and therefore, it's a privilege that's subject to a condition, and that condition is that if need be, the city can come in and inspect. It just avoids all the legal issues later on, because it's, you know, in essence, it's kind of like our implied consent law for driving. You've already consented to the fact that if you have, get stopped and have probable cause to be arrested for operating under the influence, you've given consent to take a test. I mean, that's kind of what this is, and by the virtue of having this permit, that's what you've done. You've given consent for that inspection. It's nice and clean and easy, and I think the fears of it being abused are just that, fears and not much of reality. I don't think that anybody is just going to be popping in and doing inspections all at that. I know the planning department doesn't have time to do that, and neither do we.
I'm removing that thought around, my belief even before the chief spoke, I think we are muddying our water. I believe that the goal of this was to take away the number of inspections that they have, and the goal of this was to get people to register, and I believe this does that. I'm removing my thoughts, and I am not going to add that language to number two, as I had thought I might.
Okay, so we're still at the original motion, or is there any other questions or comments? Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, I do have a question about the fee. So it says for new registrations, it's a $25 fee, and for late fees, $25. Is there a grandfather on that, so, and anybody that now currently has chickens, do they still have to pay that $25 fee?
Yes, first registration, right?
And right now, currently, well, I guess not currently, because you took that out of the ordinance before, but previously this year, that was, has always been, the late fee was $25.
So they were paying a fee before as well?
Yes.
Okay, so are they grandfathered, and do they still have to pay that fee?
They have already renewed their chicken licenses for 2019.
Okay, 2016, so next year, then, there would be a, it would be a renewal, and it would not be a new registration, so there'd be no fee then for them?
Right, unless they paid after March 31st, or 2020.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, okay, that carries. Thank you. Takes us on to new business, R 83 of 2019. Takes us on to new business, R 83, 2019, comes from Public Safety. All the person Johnson?
Oh, me again, thank you.
Yeah.
Resolution 83, 2019, authorizing directing proper city officials to approve the liquor license renewal for a period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. And I would move to approve.
Doesn't say that. June 30, 2019.
June 30, 2020. It was an amendment. I know, it was, I noted that too and Holly made the correction on it. The resolution itself is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Bartlett. Any questions or comments or anything, Greg?
Uh, nope.
Anything Chief or Holly?
Nope, everything is in order. We had one licensee, an agent, that will be coming into the next Public Safety Committee meeting regarding their compliance check violations previously. And we believe that they've already implemented some improvements that'll prevent that from happening in the future. So as far as we're concerned, I think everything is in order.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? That takes us to R 84, 2019, also from Public Safety. All the person Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. R 84, 2019, authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve the outdoor consumption permits for a period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. And I would move to approve.
Second.
Second by all the person Bartlett. Anything you wanna add? All the person Johnson?
Nope, same, you know, same old, same old. Every year, looked, no problems.
All right, any questions or comments from anyone? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. We already did R 85. So we're going to R 86, 2019. All the person Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 86, 2019, authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and a special event license for a Soton Opera House Friends Association for the Catfish River Music Festival. And I move to approve.
Second.
Second by all the person Haley. All the person Johnson?
Yep, the annual Catfish Music Festival. I guess that would be during the weekend, closest to the Fourth of July. Have not been any issues.
Chief, anything? Not in the past.
Okay. Big fundraiser for the opera hall, so encourage approval.
Okay, all the person Boersma?
As I understand it, this is a festival where kids are allowed to be there where alcohol is being served. So I will be voting against this because I think that goes to the issue of culture. I don't think that city function should be with kids involved, with, be involved with alcohol. So I will be voting against this.
Okay, one, thank you. One thing I'd like to add, like, yeah, they will be using, if I'm correct, they will be using a reader, a card reader or ID reader this year.
Has that been added to the best practices or is that?
I don't believe we put it on the best practices yet. Probably should be on a future agenda so that we can attach the readers. They weren't always available previously and that's why we didn't have them under.
Okay.
That should make it a lot safer.
But otherwise, they're following the best practices?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? That carries, thank you. The next four are coming from Finance Committee, R 87, 2019. All the person Schumacher?
Finance presents for approval, Resolution 87, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with Recreation Engineering and planning to complete Phase Two of Design and Engineering Services for the Whitewater Park. Move for approval.
Second. What was that, Jensen? All the person Jensen, okay, it was the second. Anything you wanna add, Brett?
So this is just Phase Two of a three-part series in order to get all of the ducks in a row, so to speak, for the Whitewater Park design and, and construction.
Okay, all the person Hirsch?
This is, this also includes the hydrologic studies that we need to get any future grant money or anything from the DNR. So it's, it's the crucial part that we need.
Okay. Director Glenn is here, if anybody has any questions for him. Otherwise, you can kinda walk us through this.
Sure, it's like Alderman Schumacher said, it's basically the second phase of the engineering for the park. And it's gonna really show like what the park will look like, the water levels and how the flow is affected by actual the structures in the river. It's gonna pretty much get us to the point and applying for the permits for the DNR. And that's what we need really to move forward with applying for the grants to actually have the Whitewater Park. Part of the whole development in the, in the grant, so. Some of you are, some of you are new. So Recreation Engineering Plan, they also did a concept plan for us. And Gary Lacy is the owner of the company. And he's, he's probably the most prominent whitewater park designer in the world, building 120 of these across North America.
All the person Boersma?
Yeah, Dan, would you, could you kinda just briefly summarize where we are in terms of the dam?
Well, I think it's, it's, this is one of the things that it's a part of seeing as far as the design goes, how the dam would be affected by it, you know. So if we remove the dam, the Whitewater Park course, I mean, the design, it will show us the design with the dam gone as part of the Whitewater Park course, I guess I should say. So I think it's something that's needed and it's, the Whitewater Park Street Committee has really gotten to the point that something like this is needed to show what, how everything would look with the dam removed and the Whitewater Park in place for it.
I guess I ask a question because, you know, whether or not, you know, whether or not this second phase study will address the issue of whether, of whether the dam should stay or not stay. But also the ramifications, if the dam stays, what's gonna be the result? And if the damn goes, what, what are the results? So are we gonna be getting a recommendation from this, from this Phase Two study as to whether the dam should go or stay?
I think the whole, the whole basis of this is to give everybody the information to make an informed decision on whether the dam should go as part of the water park.
All the person Bartlett?
Can you refresh my memory, Dan? Was that site survey to be done by others? Was that included in the sediment testing, right?
Yeah, and there was a small section downstream of the Fourth Street, which was a very small amount of money that was done by, being done by a different company.
Do we have those results back yet or will those be back soon? And what's the timeline for Phase Two?
Sure, that, that whole, that whole amount of work was supposed to take around eight to 10 weeks. And we're about a month into the, they were down there three weeks ago doing the surveying. And I took a picture of them and they're John Bullitt with their wrong probes and stuff, but.
Will this start immediately after those results are back then?
Yep. The timeline for this is, it takes about four to six months to complete all this work.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? President Mieske?
Could we explain where the, could we explain where the close to $50,000 will be coming from?
It's in the CIP. Any other questions or comments? Okay, here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. R 88, 2019, all the person Schumacher?
Finance presents for approval, Resolution R 88, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement with MSA to complete a master plan for Mount Park. Move for approval?
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. All the person Schumacher, go ahead.
So this is the long-term plan to, to figure out what, what the park can look like in the future. Proposals are sent out for that. And of the finalists, the MSA was chosen to best fit that plan. They were a bit over the budget, but some money can be grabbed back from, from CIP process to cover that additional cost for them. But not to exceed the 27,777.
Okay. And this also went through parks as well, right?
Yes.
All the person Hirsch, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, we were down to three finalists for this. And President Mieske was invited guest to that as well as Phil and everybody else then on our committee. And MSA just blew everybody else, not to say out of the water. But they were, they were just really good. And they have the vision that I think is what we really want for a master plan down at Mant. I mean, this is our major park and we want it done right. And we want to have something unique and really cool. And these guys offered that.
Yeah, I think the other thing that impressed the group was their experience with various stakeholders. And I don't know how many stakeholders are there, Dan?
There's quite a few. But yeah, I think there's a lot of different stakeholders have a very different view on how the park should be. And they have a lot of good experience coming to consensus with a lot of these type of situations. That's one of the things that impressed all of them.
Are there any questions or comments on this one? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. R 89, 2019, all the person Schumacher?
Finance presents for approval, Resolution R 89, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Baker Tilly to complete a park impact fee study. Move for approval?
Second.
Second by all the person Hirsch. All the person Schumacher?
All right, so this is 13,500. And this is going with Baker Tilly, who does our auditing and that. They were already doing some fee, impact fee studies with other municipalities like McFarland. So they were pretty highly regarded. As far as being able to do that, we have it set so that we're looking at the, the impact fees at about every three to five-year interval in there.
Okay. Does this one come through parks as well?
Yes, and it, and it was approved. What we were doing with the Dan is when we found out what new parks coming in, the impact fee just isn't enough for us to get the equipment that we need. I mean, I mean Nordic Ridge, Dan did great. We had to go get grants. We had to ask community members for more donations. That just really shouldn't be. Cause we haven't updated this since 10 years ago. And I think we need to make sure that parks, you know, we can outfit our parks when we create them. And so I think it's really cool.
Okay, anything you wanna add, Dan, while you're here?
I mean, just that Baker Tilly got a pretty wave of reviews from the director in Wanakee. And I used to work there. And she said that the person that was the project manager, she was really good to work with. I know they do a lot of work for the city in the finance department, so.
Okay.
Just a question on fiscal impact. I know you're asking to not exceed 13,500. And curiosity, potential out-of-pocket expenses? I don't know what that can be.
Sometimes it's travel, but they're not going very far right up in Madison.
They'll bill you for mileage, cost of the report, just in terms of paper binding, things like that. I imagine it'd be minimal.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. One more from Finance, R 90, 2019.
Finance presents for approval, Resolution R 90, 2019, approving an agreement with True North Consultants for services related to the testing and demolition of former Public Works building on Fourth Street. Move for approval?
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. All the person Schumacher?
Other than figuring out what the exact, this, or the perimeter around the, or no, the perimeter around the powerhouse thing. But I don't think that that really has any impact on, on what this resolution is.
I can have Planning Director Sheil walk us through this if you wish. I think he's the one that put this one together.
That might be good, just to, just so we're clear on all of the, all the players involved with that one. Cause that one's a, or the powerhouse being a sensitive building.
You guys just approved the money, right?
I can alleviate the concerns by telling you this doesn't affect the powerhouse. This is related to the other buildings on the site. It's the assessment, the preparation of plans and specifications for the demolition and removal of the other buildings, not the, not the powerhouse facility. We've, we've worked with True North. They had experience and worked with us on some of the facilities out at the Public Works facility as well. It's part of that project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the scope of this work? All the person Haley?
I'm not clear which building the Foundry Building is. It's under the bid alternate point. That would be the Blacksmith Shop.
That's the Blacksmith Shop.
Blacksmith Shop, yeah.
I think he's referring to the.
It's the same thing.
Yes. The, the RDA is hoping to have an alternate proposal for demolition of the remaining facility on, on the Highway Trailer Site. So we include that as a bid alternate.
Any other questions or comments? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Ordinance 20, 2019 is on for first reading. And this is coming out of the Planning Commission. All the person Caravella, you wanna read through this one?
Sure. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands located west of US Highway 51 and north of State Highway 138 in the city of Stoughton from RH Rural Holding to SR5 Single Family Residential and I Institutional. That's, and this is the first reading.
Yeah, it's the first reading.
Twenty of 2000, oh, of 2019.
Yeah, so somewhere out on 51 and 138, there's some land we wanna rezone. And I think Planning Director Sheil can probably give us a few more specifics on that. And this was something we discussed last night at the Planning Commission amongst many other things. It's on the screen, go ahead.
So these parcels are related to the final plat that will be considered as part of the north plat of Kettle Park West along with the certified survey map. I'm sorry, I'm getting to the graphic here, one second. These are the residential properties along the northern edge of the Kettle Park West. This will become clear as you'll be looking at the certified survey map, the final plat and the rezoning. All is part of a, a package at your next meeting. But it's here for a first reading to introduce the rezoning aspects of this development proposal. So these are the residential components found in the north plat of the Kettle Park West. And then this is the certified survey map that identifies the area to be rezoned to institutional. You'll recognize that as you drive out along Highway 138 is the big basin of water. The Mayby Pond is a primary facility on this park parcel.
What is the rationale for the change of zoning?
Institutional is where stormwater management and open space facilities are located. The other, obviously the other rezoning is consistent with what the land use is intended to be for residential purposes.
Okay, thank you. We have developer here too, if anybody has any questions for Dennis. All the person Hirsch?
I just had a question of how you delineate it where the wetland line is? Cause it seems very small compared to what I've been seeing out there for that kettle.
I don't designate it. There was actually a certified mapping specialist that had to go do an assessment. And that submittal for wetland delineation had to be submitted to the state for verification.
Okay, I was just curious.
So that's, that's probably how that was identified on this particular map.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Good question. Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, what'll happen, this is still come back to us in two weeks. So if you have anything between now and then, feel free to contact Rodney, and he'll try to, to get you and the rest of the council any answers or clarifications you might be looking for. So that moves us on to item 15, which is R 91 of 2019. And this is coming from myself, so I'm looking for a motion to confirm a citizen appointment of Pete Manley to the RDA pursuant of 2-127 of the Stoughton Municipal Code.
I so move.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Borsma, second by Caravella. And I would just tell you a little bit about Pete. He's a local construction guy here in Stoughton. In the past, he served in the 1990s on the Landmarks Commission, so he has a little bit of experience with us. And, pardon me? He was on council for a while too, wasn't he? Was he?
I think so.
Oh, okay. He didn't tell me that. Maybe he didn't want to admit to it.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe so.
And Pete would be replacing Brian Gergen. Brian was on, on the RDA and really brought some expertise in construction, but he decided he had to resign. His workload was just incredibly busy with all the construction going on. So we're, we're excited to have the possibility of Pete taking his place. Are there any questions or comments? And on these RDA appointments, we do need, what, a four-fifths vote approval or something?
For RDA, that's what the statute says, yeah.
So we're hoping to get that, so.
I just had a question.
Sure.
This is serving out the remaining term for someone, and how long is that?
I believe it's through next year.
Okay.
Yep. Because they're typically five-years terms, and Brian had replaced somebody else, so we're kind of trying to get to the finish line with this one and then reboot at the end of the five years for a full term. Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Borsma to adjourn.
Second.
It was the second. Second by Healy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?